Good evening, everyone. I call the City Council Committee of the Whole meeting for Wednesday, January 17th, to order. This time we'll have a moment of silence to think about what you'd like to think about. Thank you. If you'd all please stand and join Alderman McGinnis in leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Alderman McGinnis. Mr. Krupp, please call roll for tonight.
Ardone?
Here.
Kelly?
Here.
McGinnis?
Here.
Reinert?
Here.
Gripp?
Here.
Newton?
Here.
Lynch?
Here.
Tdun?
Here.
Jobchin?
Here.
Anne Burkholder?
Here.
Ten President, Your Honor.
Thank you, sir. So again, good evening, everyone, and welcome. As we begin the meeting of the City Council Committee of the Whole, I'd like to welcome everybody in attendance and anybody who's watching through any particular device. Respectfully welcome your opinions and comments, but please keep in mind as you share your thoughts, you're sharing them with your fellow Davenporters and anybody throughout the region. Happy you're participating in your city government, but as to your participation, please reflect the common desire we all share to make Davenport a better place. Especially for the folks in here, if you just put your cellphone on silent, please, or turn it off so it simply doesn't get in the way or disturb anybody that's talking. If you want to address the council, please come to the podium at the particular time. The microphone's above you. Love to know your name, order, address, and if you're not from here, we'd love to know where you're from. Please address the council or the staff as a body and not any individual, and you'll have five minutes. We'll be respectful of you. Please be respectful of us, and we want to hear everyone, so please don't disturb anybody by shouting out or making noise so we can hear what's going on. Thank you very much. City Administrator, tonight, filling in, Ms. Gleason, anything tonight?
Just briefly, the Public Works Department is planning on picking up large snow piles from the downtown this evening, so there isn't no parking downtown, and the parking ramps are free.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, we have six public hearings this evening, two under community development, four under public works, so we'll start with community development. Alderman Gripp and Alderman Reinert will discuss. Alderman Gripp, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have two public hearings on community development this evening. I open the public hearing for case REZ 23-06, being the request of Larry Edward Stoltenberg Trust to rezone approximately 25.84 acres of land located at the southwest corner of Sloper Town Road and Hillendale Road from SAG Agricultural District to I-1 Light Industrial District. Is there anyone from the public who's here to comment on this public hearing? Please step to the lectern, state your name and address or ward.
Hi, my name's Gary Eckland, and I live in Alderman Kelly's Ward. I want to speak in opposition to this. I've been thinking lately a lot about the city of Davenport, pre-1975 and post-1975, and you're probably way too young to remember that. But it used to be that our population was just as big, and it was all south of Kimberly. I can remember when Kimberly was a new road, or at least they were widening it to four lanes. It had been a two-lane road. And our community and economic development department has for years promoted sprawl development. We used to have an industrial zone where Oscar Meyer was and the railroad tracks and this and that, and there's been a policy of the city to spend gazillions and gazillions of tax dollars on sprawl development with new roads, which also have to be plowed, new sewers, which have to be paid for and maintained. And they had a policy some years ago to start that new industrial park out there, and we make fun of the Soviet Union for their plans of their industrial plans, and we talk about how we're a private enterprise system, and there's nothing private enterprise about the industrial zone out there. That was city government planning, city tax money, and taxpayer subsidies. And it's time for us to stop the sprawl development and start moving back in. Sorry about that. I think, obviously, if you have twice as many roads and twice as many sewers, or three times as many roads and three times as many sewers, it's going to cost that much more money to maintain those things, to build them, and you guys have chosen, or the city councils have chosen, to create sewer and garbage tax system, which is very disproportionately... So yeah, to get back to that, I'll finish. I'm just opposed to this. We need to stop the sprawl development. We need to leave some room for some monarchs and some flowers and some butterflies, and this is not private enterprise. Nothing, all of the sprawl north of 53rd Street is not private enterprise. It's been an industrial policy, and from my perspective, all of the decisions, I'm going to only go back to 2000 for this one, but for all of the decisions in our city are made from the perspective, if I'm white and I have a college degree and I make $150,000 a year, what's good for me? And we don't think about what's good for minimum wage workers.
Let's get back to the topic, please.
Yeah, well, I'm just opposed to any more sprawl development. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else from the public who's here to comment on this public hearing? All right, seeing no one, I move to close the public hearing. There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? This public hearing has been closed. Before I open the second public hearing, I'm going to take a point of personal privilege as the chair, and I'm going to ask Parks and Recreation Director Chad Dyson to come up and kind of speak specifically to Davenport Junior Theater as a part of the Annie Whitmire complex.
Thank you, Chair, Council, Mayor, Chad Dyson, Parks and Recreation Director. The Davenport Junior Theater is a historic and flagship program of the Parks and Recreation Department. We intend, as this consideration of conveyance of the Annie Whitmire property, we intend to host a series of input meetings to discuss the opportunities before us to plan for the future potential of the Davenport Junior Theater. It is very much an important part of our program offering and to the community, and we want to make sure we gather all input so we can plan accordingly for the future of the program. Any other questions?
No, thank you. And I will say, because I see a lot of new faces in the audience, and I do appreciate you coming down to participate in local government, so I want to explain kind of a couple of procedural things. So this item for the conveyance of Annie Whitmire is coming up right now for a public hearing. This is the opportunity for the city council to listen to you. We will not respond to anything that you say. It will come up again under the Community Development section on page two of your agenda. At that point, again, we will ask for public input, and then the city council will have discussion on the item at that time. Okay, so you'll have two opportunities to speak. We will not speak as a part of this public hearing. So with that, I open the public hearing on the proposed conditional conveyance of a portion of city-owned property located in the 2800 block of Eastern Avenue, known as the Annie Whitmire Campus, to AW Holdings LLC petitioner. Is there anyone from the public here to comment on this item?
Gary Eckland, I'm not really wanting to speak against this, but I partly am wanting to speak against it, and I would look forward to hearing more details. It's sad to me that I don't expect that if this is converted 100% to affordable housing, I don't think it will make up for what the city of Davenport and Palmer destroyed in their desire to racially and ethically cleanse the neighborhood around Palmer of black people.
Please not disparaging comments, Mr. Eckland. Thank you.
Well, when you destroy people's homes...
Sir, you're disparaging a couple of organizations. Let's please just avoid that.
Okay, I'll stop. I'll stop.
We're talking about the conveyance of the Annie Whitmire property.
Right, and housing, and housing, and housing.
Specific to this project, please.
Right, because I actually want to praise if the gentleman that's behind this is the one who owns Marycrest, or his company's owned Marycrest, and some of the other buildings. I've had a lot of jobs where I've been in and out of a lot of buildings, like I was in and out of 324 Main Street, so I was very familiar with that situation before it collapsed. And if this is the gentleman who owns Marycrest, you know, that's better than demolishing it, and it's a great place to live, as far as I know, you know, renovating and saving buildings and putting people in there for housing. If the Davenport Community Schools had done that with their two schools, we'd be better off. So I really don't want to speak about this, but I mean, against it, but I'm concerned, and it seems like it's kind of like announced as a done deal without, it seems like a lot of stuff is kind of done behind closed doors. I don't know if you still have the habit. I know the city used to have the habit of having, I don't know whether it was Tuesday afternoon meetings where in order to avoid...
Sir, once again, please keep your comments to the conveyance of the Annie Whitmire complex.
Well, I'm trying to speak directly to that.
Okay.
I really, truly am. If there's information, if the city of Davenport has to be public meeting when they have a quorum, and they have a system to avoid having a quorum in order to discuss stuff to keep it secret, I object to that, because we should have more information sooner. So again, I'm not...
Sir, we're conducting the public hearing right now. Do you have any more comments on Annie Whitmire?
Well, I'll look forward to seeing the details. Like I said, I don't want to speak against it. I do think it's ironic. I don't know if it's going to be subsidized housing. I know when people are elderly, there's certain buildings in the city where they pay, say, a one-third of their social security income.
So perhaps a lot of your questions will be answered later in the meeting when we have the discussion on this.
Okay, but I just, I don't want to cheerlead like the city's doing something really great when we're demolishing houses constantly. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here to comment on this public hearing? Please step to the lectern, state your name and address or ward, please.
Hi, my name is Nicole Savatsky. I'm a Ward Five resident, Junior Theater Incorporated Board Member, proud alum and current parent of a DJT student. In fact, he's in an improv class there right now. First, I want to say I think this redevelopment project is such a good one. Affordable housing is incredibly important and will benefit our community. Thank you for your commitment to it. Mr. Iles did a beautiful job with the Capitol Theater, and I know that if anyone can give Annie Whitmire the love it deserves, it would be him. Annie Whitmire tells a history of our city, and it's been many things over time, all with a connection to helping the community, and I'd love to see that tradition continue by providing beautiful, accessible housing. Accessibility is also something that's important to our organization, too. We recently got rid of ticket prices to make our shows free for all to see and have ASL interpreters for our show. In 2017, our board raised $112,000 to improve the ADA accessibility for the city property, the Nice Wander Theater. We did that to show a commitment to the city and our commitment to accessibility. We've been in partnership with the city for 45 years and have been using more and more of the property as we've grown over the past 72 years as America's second-oldest children's theater. Our organization is a little bit different. We have a nonprofit arm, and then we have the city program with the Parks and Rec. The nonprofit arm works more for our main stage shows, so those are the three larger-scale shows that you see advertised that are open to the public. The kids do all the acting, run the tech. Parks and Rec just takes care of the, not just, but takes care of the classes, camps, dance, and tumbling programs. Our partnership with the city has been one of the reasons we've been able to keep the barrier of entry low for our organization. DJT has grown recently. It's using most of the entire campus. Some of the things that have been proposed kind of looks like it just takes care of the theater, but it does all 10 cottages on the north end of the campus. We actively use them along with large scene shop and additional storage. We have over 2,000 enrollments a year, with kids coming as far as Los Angeles for our summer programming. In fact, over 450 kids plus employees and volunteers use that campus every single week. Herein lies the problem, though. We've been told different things regarding timelines from different people. At the last public meeting, we were told by the developer that we would need to be out of the cottages by April, May, 2025. We've heard otherwise, that we would get to stay at three of the 10 cottages until the end of 2025, and we've heard from others that we've been able to stay for even longer in some capacity. This has led to a lot of apprehension from our board and current students. We want to ensure that we can continue to provide the same experience going forward and continue to grow without losing our autonomy. My ask is that the board be involved in all conversations regarding Davenport Junior Theater's future to allow us to have a say in our future as well. Since we're so intertwined, any decisions from the city regarding DJT will affect us and our nonprofit. We've been partners since 1977 and have demonstrated that we want to continue that partnership. It's a little frustrating that we haven't been included in any of the discussions thus far, and would appreciate a seat at the table going forward. Thank you.
If I could just ask the crowd that we don't applaud, we don't boo, it's not a performance, we let the speakers' speeches stand on their own, and then we just observe and listen as a part of our accepted decorum here at the city council meetings. Please step to the lectern, state your name and address or ward.
Thank you very much. Judith Lee, Second Ward, and just got off the plane about two hours ago from Arizona, 60 degrees, sorry. So I just threw some thoughts together about the Annie Whitmire, and I thank you for the opportunity to speak about the proposed conveyance of a large portion of the city-owned Annie Whitmire property at the 2800 block of Eastern, AW Holdings. We all know that we have a large deficit of affordable housing and senior housing in Davenport, commonly estimated to be about 6,000 units, if not more. So I do support the construction of affordable housing here. We really need it. I believe that we, as a city, have a duty and a responsibility to increase the number of affordable housing units here. We also know we've lost and have a high potential to continue to lose affordable housing in Davenport due to evacuations, due to poor maintenance, and unlivable conditions under our current inspection program. So, and I'm just setting it up, so 300 to 350 units just recently as a round number. So I believe that the city of Davenport really does have to develop more, as well as up their inspections and their timely enforcement of landlord repairs, so we keep what we have and then add to it. So I have a couple of questions and concerns about the proposed agreement. I'm talking about the agreement here with AW Holdings, not the concept as a whole. So first, and this is reading the agreement, it's not clear, but it appears that the city, in its words, desires to convey approximately 32 acres to the developer, contingent on acquisition of certain tax credits for $1 and a quitclaim deed. The developer would have the option to purchase to provide the sufficient site control to obtain the tax credits and other fundings. Now, I looked it up on the county assessors, and the property is worth $22,778,920, according to the assessor's page. So if I'm reading the draft agreement correctly, it's Section 7, we're basically giving away $23 million property, which the agreement says the city can buy back at market rates later, if we want to, if the owner is going to sell, with at-market value, with 60 days' notice to make that determination. If I'm not reading the draft agreement correctly, then the agreement needs to clarify that conveyance by the city would be at-market value. If the conveyance is not at-market value, then I'm concerned about setting a precedent where we're giving $23 million piece of property away for a dollar for a good cause, but what precedent does that set? At what point do we say to another developer that wants to use and convey, have the city convey them land, valuable land? At what point do we say, oh, no, we won't do it for you, but we'll do it for you? So that's a concern I have. And I do recognize that the proposed developer has extensive and successful experience with rehab of historic buildings, and I recognize that maintenance of historical buildings can be an expensive challenge once a developer sells to the ultimate owner. The city states they did a walk-through of the campus with potential developers over five years ago. Well, lots changed in five years, and I would think that for $23 million piece of property that we would offer again to see if somebody else is also interested, to see if we can get the best possible deal from this. And it also states it's possible that not all units would be affordable units, as the agreement states, as some might be at-market rates. I believe the agreement should at least state a minimum number or a proportion of the units that must be at affordable rates, so that it's very clear to the developer what our expectations are for what we're giving them. And a real problem that I've got, a concern I've got, really, the city admits that it has deferred necessary maintenance throughout the campus. Will the developer or the city be responsible for conducting the necessary maintenance during the year or so that the developer has site control so that they can get the tax credits that they're looking for? Who is responsible for liability during this period where the developer has the site control, including for existing tenants, which includes Head Start as well as Family I'm interested in what was just said about the Nice Wander Chapel, the Junior Theater, and the three cottages, and one of the problems, I understand, is of course parking. I've gone there quite a bit. I think I would like to see it to where, instead of us handing it over and we keep it for a dollar perhaps, that we keep it for the stability of the Junior Theater to this critical and popular program, and then if, through this work that Director Dyson is doing, they find a better answer for Junior Theater, then sell it to the developer for a dollar, if that's what we decide to do. But I think that gives an opportunity for the children who live in the affordable housing to take part in Junior Theater, having it right there in the neighborhood, as well as the seniors would be able to go over and see the plays and possibly even volunteer with Junior Theater. So I would like to see it stay there unless Director Dyson finds a better answer and the board finds a better answer. So in closing, I support additional affordable housing in Davenport. I also think some of these questions need to be considered, and I'll look forward to the discussion you have when this comes up on the agenda. But I think you need to take a really close look at the agreement and make sure it's the best deal for Davenport, for the people who need affordable housing, and in support of that affordable housing with the developer or developers. I hope this goes on discussion when you have a chance. And I also request that city council address a serious problem of lack of enforcement of the landlords, who are not maintaining the existing stock we have.
Ma'am, ma'am. Annie Whitmire, please.
I understand. Davenport needs to take a hard look at the various solutions, and council must lead the way as a governing city, governing body of this city. But I do support having affordable housing at Annie Whitmire. Thank you.
Thank you. Step to the lectern, state your name and address or ward, please.
Got a whole rules here. Hi, my name is Ruben Leverage. I live at 1104 East High Street in the Fifth Ward. I'm a high school senior, and I've been going to DJT since I was in fourth grade. I recently won first place at the Bulldog Shuffle at Bennett Nor High School. I won first in original oratory, going up against dozens of competitors from several different schools across Iowa. I won that because of the people behind me and the people at DJT. Now, when my friends and I caught wind of what was happening, although we was very confused because not a lot of information was out, of course, at the time, about 100 other people were with me, immediately searching for answers, trying to figure out what was going on. Unfortunately, there is not a clear answer where everybody gets to walk away happy. Affordable housing gets to happen. We don't have too many buildings in Davenport anymore, and we get to keep our theater. It's not happening. And we own, the city is in crisis, sorry. The city is in crisis right now, I've learned. We have a lot of buildings that are too costly to maintain that we need to sell, and I don't envy your job to solve that crisis. It seems very, very hard. However, you cannot resolve this property crisis by casting DJT out into the cold after you sell the Whitmire complex, because DJT and the people who run it are pillars of their community. In sixth grade, I had auditioned for the Wizard of Oz, and I have never been more scared of anything ever in my life. As I was about to pee my pants onstage, Chris Meyer, in the background, decided to start dancing along to the audition piece that I was singing, and I was able to get through my audition because of it. When I was angry and wanted to tear the world down because I thought you guys were going to close DJT, Mr. Young on the board was able to thoroughly explain what was going on with this sale and helped organize my being here and my thoughts as I'm presenting them. Ashley Becker has done so much work in the past two years to expand this program at DJT so that as many young people in Davenport and across the greater Quad City area can take advantage of these wonderful programs. And Daniel Sheridan, in all the meetings we've had, Daniel Sheridan has never uttered a single disparaging word about any of you or anyone that you are selling the property to. He has striven to play fair, work above the board, and continue serving his community and the DJ program as best he can in light of these stressful circumstances, because the people at DJT's job and your job is the same. You have to help Davenport as best you can. Your job is to deal with the property crisis that we're facing. Their job is to encourage young people like me to stand up, to be brave and bold and have fun. I stand before you today as a high school senior, when so many of my peers are on their cellphones unwilling to do anything with their lives, I am here petitioning my elected representatives to take a stand on things. Because of DJT, because the people at DJT have worked tirelessly to provide me and so many others with the skills we need to move forward and better ourselves and better our community, as you all are working to do now. I was born in Chicago. I know a lot about Section 8 housing. I know we have to make affordable housing a reality in Davenport, but you cannot, you cannot get rid of, I'm sorry, I cannot offer a solution to affordable housing. I don't know the answer to that. I happen to not have any additional complexes lying around in my back pocket that we could just sell for a dollar. But I can ask you to do two things. Number one, please don't sell our campus. It's very nice. It's very easy to use. It works great for what we use it for. And second, if you have no choice but to sell it to AW Holdings, who will then sell it to a company that will then inevitably allow it to end up overcharging and disparaging, sorry, hurting the people that rent it out, give us the time and give us the information to find a better place to go. I would like to echo the man who was up here's thoughts earlier. It feels like things have been behind closed doors. It feels like we have not had the chance to be adequately involved in the selling of our home, and this is a disgrace. The people at Davenport Junior Theater have worked tirelessly, day in, day out, overtime hours for crap pay, just as you have. Your interests are in solving one crisis, their interests are in bringing up young people to be as successful as I will be, and I know you would not have enough seats to hold everybody if everybody that they had influenced were here. I know a lot of them are rehearsing right now for Finding Nemo, which you should all come see. It's going to be great. So in closing, give us the time and the resources and the information to find a better home if you have to sell our home. Thank you.
Thank you. Please step to the lectern, state your name and address or ward.
Hi, my name is Anne McGlynn. I live in Alderman Kelly's Ward. My address is 3009 Grand Avenue. I live, I haven't counted, like seven or eight blocks from the Annie Whitmire campus. I'm also the founder and executive director of Tapestry Farms. We are a tenant on the campus. I am going to speak in support of this conveyance, but first I want to say, please take care of Junior Theater. It's a wonderful organization. My children have gone through the organization, so please make sure that they are taken care of. Secondly, I want to tell you that the three city employees who are assigned to the Annie Whitmire campus are excellent at their jobs, so please take care of them. They take very good care of us. So my work is with refugees who come to our community, mostly from East and Central Africa, Afghanistan, Syria, Haiti, places that you hear about on the news. When they come here, they are immediately eligible to go to work. A lot of times, the work that they do is very hard work, but the pay is not really high. So we spend a considerable amount of our time and resources finding safe, affordable, hopefully nice, but most importantly, sustainable housing for the families that we work with, housing that they can stay in and their children can stay in for a long period of time. We're a small organization, but last year, in 2023, we spent $41,000 just to make sure that our families had a safe, affordable, and sustainable place to live in our community so they can contribute to all that happens in our community. Our organization has actually been in three buildings on the Annie Whitmire campus. We've been in Building F, which is under demolition right now. We've been in Building C, which is along Eastern Avenue. It's the two-story building that's kind of by the gym. It's a beautiful building. The windows are huge, and it's sunny inside. And when we were temporarily there because of problems with Building F, I kept thinking, oh, my gosh, this would be a beautiful place for someone to live. So now we're in Building G, and if you're on campus, please stop by. We're actually not there a lot, so you probably want to call first, but it's the stone and brick cottage on the southwest corner. It was built in the early 1930s to be the preschool for the orphanage. It is a gorgeous... It is a gorgeous building. Big windows. It's a lovely space. We have gathering spaces there. We have our culturally specific food pantry. We have our closet of care. We start seedlings there for our farm operations. It's beautiful. We love it. We had hoped to stay there for a long time. The absolute only reason why I'll be not terribly sad to have to leave is knowing that the entire campus is going to be converted into affordable housing, just like Building C. Building G is beautiful. As someone who lives near the campus, who knows the history of the campus, who understands the significant of the campus, significance of the campus, who's been in the community for 25 years I've lived here, this is it. This is the project. This is the one. The campus has sat for a very long time, not at its full capacity of what it could be. When I visited Building K several years ago and was told I couldn't go on the second and third floors because they were condemned, I thought, what is going to happen to this campus? This is it. So if you ever want to come visit Building G and see what a beautiful place it will be for someone who has limited income, who I believe will be a senior citizen, because we're the part of the campus with the senior housing, please come. I'd be happy to show you. This project is it. I know it's controversial. I really do hope Junior Theater can end up in a beautiful place. And if you have any questions at all, please feel free to contact me. Thank you.
Thank you. Please step to the lectern, state your name and address or ward, please.
Hello, I am a proud Fifth Ward resident and I've been fortunate enough to be called Miss Jessica by my students for the past 15 years. And I want to thank you all, council members and Mr. Mayor, for hearing all of the many voices surrounding this project. You can tell everyone's pretty passionate about it and that does not make your decision easy. I want to start by saying that I am not against affordable housing. I think that this is vital to our community and in fact, I think it is an essential, fundamental right that all people deserve. At Junior Theater, we have several students, families, and employees who have benefited greatly from affordable housing. Junior Theater cares a lot about creating accessibility for our community. Like Nicole said, you will not find a ticket price anywhere when you come to Davenport Junior Theater. Everything from our professionally-produced mainstage productions to our dance recitals to our summer camp showcases, everything is free in an effort to make the arts more I, my concern today is that the city has been wanting to offload this property for at least five years. I think we can all understand why. It is a lot to maintain. However, this started five years ago and there was no forethought given at that time to start a conversation about the next steps and any sort of plan for rehoming Davenport Junior Theater. This has all come about so quickly to the organization that I think a lot of us are just kind of left in shock and wondering what the future is like. I'm grateful that there's talk of Junior Theater being able to use the theater itself. It's a beautiful, newly renovated theater. In my opinion, it's one of the premier theater spaces in the Quad Cities. However, I want to be clear that theater is not made in a theater. Theater is made in the 10 cottages that we currently occupy with our costume shop, which houses 10,000 costume pieces, our workspaces where we have students and professionals alike who design and build props and costumes, there are rehearsal spaces and teaching spaces in these cottages. The south end of the camp, or sorry, the north end of the campus has been fully utilized for a very long time and that part of the campus has not sat vacant. I just want to make that clear. I understand that there are also a lot of timelines at stake. I understand the developer is under timelines to be sure that he secures and uses his funds in a timely manner. I know that we have families in the Quad Cities who are in need of housing and I hope you also realize that Davenport Junior Theater is now on a timeline to find a new home. So at this time, Junior Theater needs three things. We need time, we need financing, and we need support. We need time to find something, to create some sort of plan, to create or find anything comparable to what we have now that allows us to program. The kind of programming that we currently offer is not doable in the latest I heard was 16 months' time. That's, I don't think, doable to be able to fully find something that we can dive in and go to work in, which brings me to my second point, which is funding. We need funding. We need to be promised some serious capital from the city to be able to move forward. I think you would be able to count on Junior Theater, Junior Theater, Inc., for playing their part and trying to raise funds as well, but it's going to be a big project and I think we all realize that and we will need the city's help. Finally, we need the support of the city of Davenport. We are partners. Davenport Junior Theater is a parks and recreation program. The city of Davenport supports Davenport Junior Theater so that we can support the community members that come to us. We should be allies in this situation. We should be working together to find a solution and instead, things are feeling so adversarial at times because I think a lot of people are feeling like there has been very little communication with and consideration of Davenport Junior Theater. I don't stand here and offer any solutions. I, I don't know. I know you have a lot of things that have been placed before you, ideas and thoughts. I don't know what those are, but I am asking you, please, for time. Time is what we need. I understand that you want to get rid of the property and sell it. I understand that fully, but we need time. Please delay this just so we can figure out what's next. Thank you.
Step to the lectern, state your name and address or ward, please.
Hello, my name is S. Klipsch and I live in the Fourth Ward of Davenport, 916 Grand Court in Davenport, Iowa. I'm a student at South High Elementary School. I have been at Junior Theater since I was three years old. I'm almost 14 now. It's helped me with my social skills, my confidence, my love for theater, and the arts. The teachers and students at Davenport Junior Theater always accepted me for who I am and always showed a hand of support. I hope that Davenport can be a home, can always have a home in Davenport. Junior Theater is very important for kids because it gives them friends, confidence, and a safe place to learn and be creative. Please take care of this important part of our community and provide it with a home that will always be for kids, by kids, for generations to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Please step to the lectern, state your name and address or ward, please.
I'm Anne Gallagher, 2049 West First Street. I'm in Maryland McGinnis Ward. My sister and her adult son came down to see a relative in a Junior Theater play and they were amazed at the quality of the performance and also the beautiful theater. And the theater has 350 seats. It was packed. It's the right size for Junior Theater as far as I believe. So this excellent program needs a theater. You can't have a Junior Theater program without a theater. So Davenport currently owns a theater. You own Junior Theater now. So what I propose, I don't know if it's even reasonable, but of course you want affordable housing, but couldn't you take part of that large property and keep part of it? You've got a theater. Make the cottages more usable and then keep the parking lot. I mean, as an alternative, something to consider. Hey, thank you so much for letting me talk with you.
Thank you. State your name and address or ward, please.
Hi, I'm Leslie Klipsch. I live in the Fifth Ward. Thank you so much for your service and all of your time and really all of the care that you put into making Davenport a fantastic place to live and raise a family. I am a passionate supporter of Tapestry Farms. I am a Junior Theater parent. I'm an advocate of affordable housing and I'm actually the great granddaughter of William Church who lived at Annie Wittmeyer as an orphan. So I thought I should, should show up tonight. My husband and I decided to move back to Davenport from Chicago to raise our family and we almost immediately signed our kids up for Junior Theater. All three of our children have benefited from the amazing programs, the wonderful adults who have taught them and inspired them. There's no doubt that Junior Theater is an absolute gem in this city. I'm so, so grateful for that. I wanted to share my voice though tonight, not just as an appreciative parent of our country's second oldest children's theater, but also as a neighbor and as a believer in equal rights and equal access for all. I do want to make sure that all of the decision-makers and stakeholders here tonight know that Junior Theater offers accessible arts education so that all people can participate like no other organization in this city. Shows are free for all to see. Participation costs are very, very low, especially comparatively to other activities happening here in the city. This really matters to parents and caregivers who want quality programs but also at an affordable price. Junior Theater erases economic barriers so that literally anyone who has the will can participate in these life-changing experiences in the performing arts. Finally, as a Davenport citizen who lives less than a mile from Davenport Junior Theater and who very much supports affordable housing, it's been a near constant worry of mine for really the, at least the last decade that we've lived in this neighborhood, just to see all of the affordable, single-family homes that have been torn down in my neighborhood. It's been at a constant and a steady rate. If you drive through the Fifth Ward now, you'll see it happening and this is, is concerning to me. So I just want to keep that in the back of our minds as well. I will always be an optimist and I will forever believe that we can have affordable housing and we can have wonderful amenities for the people who live here and I just hope that you'll make the decisions that will be planful and thoughtful, keep people informed who need to know, and that will really truly benefit all. Thank you so much for your time.
Diane Salmon, Eighth Ward. Our children are supposed to be our future and this city is slowly just taking all of that away. We have a collapsed building that displaced children. We now have a theater that they want to take away or sell at a very low cost when we've already got high costs coming into our city because of lawsuits that should not be happening, but they are. I applaud the young man that came up here and spoke because not a lot of young people are getting involved and they're not getting involved because their voices are not being heard because adults are doing what they want to do without any thought of children. We're shutting down their schools. We're tearing down their houses. We're trying to remove anything and everything that would help them to get beyond where they are right now. We are stunting everything in their lives for things that don't matter. Yes, we need affordable housing, but we've got buildings all over the city that could be utilized, but we're spending money on these big businesses that are coming in and we need big business to keep our city going. But if people don't want to stay in the area and they don't want to bring their children, what future are we going to have because we will slowly die out? So please don't take away something that is beneficial to people. Please find another way to bring affordable housing, but also let them keep the theater because we need these people to be our future.
Is there anyone else here to comment on this public hearing? Seeing no one, I move to close the public hearing. There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? This public hearing has been closed. Back to you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Grip. Next is Public Works. Alderman Dunn and Alderman Kelly will discuss. Alderman Dunn, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have four public hearings this evening. I open the first public hearing on the plan specification form of contract and estimated cost for the Lorton Avenue Overlay and Drainage Improvement Project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this public hearing? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. This public hearing is closed. I open the second public hearing on the plan specification form of contract and estimated cost for the Water Pollution Control Plant Flood Mitigation Phase One Project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this public hearing? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. This public hearing is closed. I open the third public hearing on the specifications form of contract and estimated cost for the CY 2024 Sidewalk Program. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this public hearing? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. This public hearing is closed. And I open the fourth and final public hearing on the, hearing on the specifications form of contract and estimated cost for the CY 2024 ADA Ramp Program. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this public hearing?
Derek Cornet, Seventh Ward. I'd like to bring something to your attention about these ADA ramps. In the Seventh Ward, they're, the alleyways don't give the disadvantaged people the ability to cross them. They're large drop-offs, four or five inches, that contain the people. They can't go around their block in their wheelchairs because of these drop-offs. I would ensure that when we go into this ADA program for this year, that we should look at letting the people be able to take their wheelchair completely around their blocks without having to go in the street because the alleyways, drop-offs are too high. And I've had several calls about that and I brought it up last year and everybody said it's not required, but let's see if we can make it required so our disadvantaged people can get around. Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, I move this, move to close this public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. This public hearing is closed and back to you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Your Honor. We're done. Alderman Kelly. Next, her is petition communications. Anything from any council folks? Alderwoman McGinnis.
Thank you, Your Honor. The Third Ward meeting, which would have been last Monday, which was too cold and it was a holiday, will be Monday, January 22nd. Our guest will be Mike Carleton, our fire chief, and he will be talking about our, the new fire station. He'll be talking about our, how we do recruiting and where that is. That's always a challenge. And also all the different activities that our fire departments involved in. There are a lot of areas in the city that it touches that sometimes people are not aware of. So that is Monday, January 22nd, 6:30 PM, right here in council chambers. So thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderwoman McGinnis. Alderman Kelly.
Thank you, sir. I just wanted to say, I feel like Rihanna. How about a round of applause? Okay. Anyway, there'll be a Fifth Ward meeting on the 25th and it's going to be at the Hilltop Campus. I don't have a guest because I once was an actor, so just kidding. I grew into that. So I'll be entertaining my own troops and that'll be at 5:30 at the Hilltop Campus and anybody is welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Kelly. Anyone else? Very good. Move to the action items for discussion. We have four, community development, public safety, public works, and finance. The first one's community development. Alderman Grip and Alderman Reinos will discuss. Alderman Grip, please.
All right. Thank you, Your Honor. Item number one is a first consideration ordinance for case REZ 23-06, being the request of Larry Edwards Stoltenberg Trust to rezone approximately 25.84 acres of land located at the southwest corner of Sloper Town Road and Hillendale Road from SAG Agricultural District to I-1 Light Industrial District. Is there anyone from the public who's here to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? Seeing no one, this item will move on. Item number two is a resolution conditionally conveying a portion of city-owned property located in the 2800 block of Eastern Avenue known as the Annie Wittmeyer Campus to AW Holdings LLC petitioner. Before I ask for public comment, I'd like to bring up Bruce Berger to briefly describe the resolution that's in front of us and then kind of give us a timeline because there's a lot of different moving pieces for this project.
Bruce Berger, community and economic development. So this is the conditional conveyance resolution referencing the public hearing that's in front of you. that's in front of you. Um, it, it basically purpose is to set into motion, uh, conditional, uh, site control for the developer so that they can go after funding. And so what the agreement in essence does is set up a year time period for the developer to pursue those funding sources. So roughly February this time next year, um, if the funds have not been raised, then this would be null and void. And so the, the agreement would be, um, would not be in effect. Um, if they did secure the funding, um, in a pre-step to that, there is a, um, rezoning separate action that will come before this body, um, likely in late February and March. And all of those things are queuing up the first of several probably applications, which is in early April for the developer. Um, then it's a, that wait period. So it's the wait to see if the funding materializes. If it does, then the transfer would occur by June of 2025, so roughly a year and a half, um, with, as was mentioned, a leaseback of three of the cottages for a six-month period and a five-year lease for the main theater building, the chapel building on the campus. Um, and that again is just to allow some time to be able to look at repositioning, um, the junior theater and, and see where, um, what solutions can be, can be, uh, found out. So if, if the, the construction would start then, if the funding were in place, um, according to what I understand from the developer, sometime in 2025, probably in the, in the summer then, and would need to be completed by the end of 2026. So it's about an 18-month construction time period, so.
Thank you. All right. I will ask, is there any more comment from the pub, public on this item? All right. Please step to the lectern, state your name and address or ward. You have five minutes.
My name is Kristen Meyer, 2701 Sheridan Street. Um, I have had the pleasure of being with Davenport Junior Theater for 49 years. I moved around before the complex that was found at junior, at Annie Wittenmeyer for us to be, um, being housed in Lyndahan Building, Schneff's Jewelry Store, the Garfield House, and several other places that were not adequate for growth for junior theater. 15 years ago, junior theater had gone through some transitions. Um, enrollment was incredibly low until the current supervisor, Daniel Sheridan, came back and worked with the program to rebuild. It is now at a strength that it has never been in previous years, and it has an excellent partnership with the Junior Theater Incorporated, who is their, uh, nonprofit supporter. I have had, because of that continued growth and because of the support of the city in enabling us to expand, to go into the cottages, I've had the honor of watching my children and my grandchildren participate in the program. I am currently the general manager of one of the actual busiest hotels in Quad Cities. And what I look for, as I am interviewing people, are the skills that we are giving these kids, not just to get up on stage and not just to be able to be actors. We are giving them the skills to problem solve, to be creative, to speak in front of someone, to go into an interview to speak, to go to a college application, and go in an interview for colleges. And that is what we are trying to bring to the community. We have one of the very few non-competitive dance programs where the kids can simply come and learn and love dance in a non-competitive tumbling program that has over, I think right now, 65 participants, that they're able to come in and do just floor tumbling, one of the very few places that you can do that in the Quad Cities, again, non-competitive. It is simply for the love of communication. I have been able to do what I do because of what I learned at junior theater. I've never gone to college. I've never stepped foot into a higher learning, though all of my children have. I spent some of 13, eight years as a single parent for two of my kids. They have gone on all to be homeowners in the community and to be productive members of this community. And that is what we are looking for, for junior theater, to be able to continue to do at the scope and the scale of which we can do it. And as so many people have asked, please, give us time. We'll rise to the occasion. We want to be part of the solution. And we have dreamed of a home that is all under one roof where we don't have to cart scenery out in the rain, where we have a shop that we can build that is all ADA accessible. We want to obtain that dream with the city's support. And again, second oldest children's theater in the United States, we have people come into this community and decide to stay here because our community offers something very few do. You come in from Chicago, you come in from a lot of the larger cities, there's nothing like junior theater. And I hope that you will continue to support us. Thank you very much.
Is there any other comments from the public?
Hi, Jessica, fifth ward again. One thing I forgot to mention is that there are dozens of people currently employed at Davenport Junior Theater, some as young as 16 and some who don't need to mention their age. But I would like you to also take that into consideration when considering rehoming the program and how long it might take.
Anyone else from the public? All right. Seeing no one, we'll go to council comments. We'll start with Alderman Kelly.
It's me. Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to say why I said a couple of things that I said. I said acting because junior theater, what it did for me is it took me back to Central because I didn't want to be around my peers, so it was easier to act a fool with some people that didn't know me. But it took me back to school, and I acted in several plays at Central High School that I'm proud of. The Princess and the Bee, the Rain Man, you know what I mean? Things of that nature. So I, I definitely am that person. So I, I see the vision. And as a nine-year foster parent, I know what that campus was for because there was many a times I had to pick a child up and/or drop a child off. Bye. So you know what I'm saying? So I get it. And being the alderman of that neighborhood, I am all for affordable housing. So I, I look forward to working with Kyle and the, uh, Mr. Ailes in the back. I'm, I'm excited, and I want to be at the table to know the information because there's some information that I'm unclear about, like the timelines and all that stuff as well. So it's good that this evening we're getting brought up to speed with some of these things. But when I tell you I wanted to clap and act a fool for you, I, I, I'm, I'm here for it. I'm here for you. I'm here for the, the housing. I'm here for all of that, and I think this is about time that the fifth ward got something and we stood up for that. Thank you.
Alderwoman Lynch.
Thank you. I, I just had a couple of comments about the DJT. I am a DJT alumni. Uh, my mother enrolled me when I was in grade school. We couldn't afford much, but because of the wonderful program that's in place, I was able to participate and, um, engage in some of the plays. So it helped with a lot of my self-esteem issues as well, so thank you for all that you do. I just wanted to mention that I know that there are some items that we aren't clear on. We are working on it. Um, I, I'm confident we all support affordable housing, and I can assure you that the council members certainly care about the future of the DJT, and we will do everything we can, um, to ensure that you have a permanent home, and it's, uh, worthwhile for everyone.
Are there any other comments from the council? All right. Seeing none, I will kind of wrap this up. I, I, uh, Mr. Ailes, are you able to answer a question? Uh, so one of the questions that, that's come up, and I, I kind of knew the answer, but I, I wanted to, to bring it up to you is, uh, the question is, why can't you separate the three cottages and the theater, uh, from the development and, uh, partition that off to keep junior, junior theater there?
It's a matter of economies of scale. We have been looking at the entire campus since day one.
I'm sorry. Can you, uh, for the record, state your name and address or ward?
Chris Ailes. Since the day we began looking at the campus, uh, it was our understanding the entire campus was available or would be available, and so we have put all of our numbers together, including the cottages. And, uh, absent those, we lose some economies of scale in the overall project. So I, I can tell you today that those cottages are an integral part of our overall project. Um, I, I will, if asked, I will take a second look at that, um, but I can't promise that those numbers will work.
Uh, how many, how many units in each cottage?
Two.
And how many cottages?
I believe there are 10.
So 20, 20 units out of?
Just under 100.
Under 100. So about 20% of the project is in those cottages. Okay.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
That it?
Yeah, that's, that's it for me. And, and yes, you, you can, so, uh, you can sit down, Mr. Ailes.
Thank you.
Uh, so Alderwoman Lynch asked if she could ask some questions, and, and yes, you can take a, a second opportunity to talk. I'll speak, and then I'll ask if there's any more questions before we move on to the next topic, and then I can call on you. If you have questions for Mr. Ailes, you can bring them back up. Okay. All right. So, y- you know, one of the, the concerns I, I heard immediately with this, um, was from a lot of the supporters from, uh, Davenport Junior Theater was essentially, uh, we didn't know and we haven't been involved. Um, and I think that's true, and, um, the city could have done a better job at doing that, and I'd apologize for that. Um, you guys are partners, uh, with the city. Uh, what you do is very important, and you should be involved in figuring out what, what the future of, of junior theater looks like. Um, the other thing I want to reiterate, though, is, uh, there isn't a person with the city staff or with the, on the city council that I've talked to who has any intention of letting Davenport Junior Theater go away, right? So we're all very committed, uh, to making sure that junior theater has a home in Davenport, and they are able to continue to provide, uh, the programming that they've been providing at the level they've been providing it, okay? And what that looks like, we don't know, right? We've got it, we've got to look at that. Mr. Dyson said, we're starting to look at that. We're going to evaluate those opportunities, and I would just continue to say to our staff with the input and participation of Davenport Junior Theater so that they're able to, to help select what the future, uh, looks like. Now, speaking specifically to the, the redevelopment, okay? This is one, uh, the Annie Wittenmeyer Complex is one that's been on my list, uh, since I got on council, and every ye, year that I reviewed the budget, I counted how much money we were putting into the Annie Wittenmeyer Complex, not to improve it, um, not to keep it at the exact same spot it was, but to continue to see it deteriorate, okay? And if you've walked through some of the buildings, you're right, you can't go on the second floor of the building. There are buildings where, um, there are, are serious issues, and they're not getting better. And the, the city's capital budget does not have the capacity, uh, to continue to, uh, pump in millions of dollars of maintenance to not see it improve, okay? And the, the auditor may say that that campus is worth 22 or 24 million dollars, but if you own a hundred thousand dollar house and you need a, a $60,000 roof, your house is not worth a hundred thousand dollars. And, uh, there are more, uh, repairs that are needed than, uh, those buildings are worth. It has some added challenges in that it is historic. Um, so anything that you do to these buildings has to be done in accordance with historic preservation, uh, procedures, which Mr. Ailes happens to be, uh, very well-versed and experienced in, and he is going to do that. Um, there's also some challenges. You can't, you can't build new buildings on the campus, so trying to, to save it that way is a challenge. So, you know, when we've showed this to other developers, uh, let me tell you, there has been zero interest, um, because it takes a very specific developer to get this done, um, somebody who is well-versed in historic tax credits and historic properties. Um, and Mr. Ailes is that person, and we have the opportunity to do this now. My personal opinion is we need to take it. We will turn a property from a property that currently does not pay any taxes to a property that does contribute to the tax roll. Uh, we will take the maintenance burden off the, uh, capital budget for the city, um, and we are going to, uh, be able to maintain the historic integrity of the Annie Wittenmeyer Campus, um, which is very important, uh, to the city of Davenport, in my opinion. Um, the one big challenge is, um, what do you do to ensure the sustained success of Davenport Junior Theater? And I, I will speak for myself and myself only, but I am committed to ensuring that Davenport Junior Theater is able to continue doing what they do, and, um, we'll go from there. So is there anyone else who, uh, would like to speak? All right. Seeing no one, we will move on to item number three. That item will stay on discussion. Item number three is a motion approving the citizens advisory committee's recommendation for the reprogramming of the unspent and unobligated community development block grant, CBDG funds from CDBG year 48, ending June 30th, 2023. Is there anyone from the public who's here to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? Seeing no one, this item will move on. Alderman Reiners, will you please set our agenda?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Um, I'm, make a motion to place item number one and item number three on the consent agenda, and item number two on the discussion agenda.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Our agenda has been set. Back to you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Grip and Alderman Reiners. Next, there is public safety. Alderman Jobchin and Alderman Tim Dunn will discuss. Alderman Jobchin, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First item under the public safety agenda is a third consideration ordinance amending Schedule 11, resident parking only of Chapter 10.96 entitled Schedules by adding Scott Street along the west side from West 17th Street south to the alley there, too. Is there anyone from the public wishing to comment on this item? Anyone from council? Seeing none, that item will move on. Item number two is a resolution approving, approving a lane closure request for the listed date and time. Quad City Symphony Orchestra Symphony Day, River Center slash Adler Theater, 136 East Third Street, 8:00 AM to 2:30 PM, Wednesday, February 28th, 2024. Closure, northernmost parking lane and two travel lanes on East Third Street from Brady Street to Iowa Street. Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on this item? Anyone from council? Seeing none, that item move on. Um, before I read item number three, I do have a quick question for, uh, attorney hire. Something popped into my brain. Um, with that item that needs to be deleted, attorney hire, can I just make mention of it, or do I need a motion of that? Do a motion, okay. All right. So then, can I do that before I read everything else? So then, I would make a, I would entertain a motion, um, to delete, uh, the item under section B, German American Heritage Center, 712 West Second Street, license type, special class C beer wine on premises, from the agenda. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
That item will be deleted. Excuse me. So now I will read, um, item number three, motion approving beer and liquor license applications under section A, new license, new owner, temporary permit, temporary outdoor area, location transfer, et cetera. Uh, there is one, Los Amigos, 2843 East 40, excuse me, East 53rd Street, new license slash owner, license type, class C liquor on premises. And then there are those items under, um, section B, annual license renewals, which are not read, um, but are there for review. Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on these items? Anyone from council? Seeing none, that item will move on. I would ask Alderman Tim Dunn, please set our agenda.
I'd like to make a motion to place all items on the, uh, consent agenda for public safety.
Oop, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That closes public safety. Back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Jobchin and Alderman Tim Dunn. Next, there is public works. Alderman Rick Dunn and Alderman Kelly will discuss. Alderman Rick Dunn, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. We've got 12 items this evening. Item number one is a resolution accepting work completed under the Redstone Parking Garage Stair Tower Masonry Repair Project by TNT Tuck Pointing and Building Restoration in the amount of $163,981. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number two is a resolution accepting work completed under the West Locust Street, Division Street to Marquette Street Resurfacing Project by Hawkeye Paving Corporation in the amount of $874,631.76. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number three is a resolution accepting work completed under the Mount Street, East Locust Street to Elm Street Resurfacing Project by Hawkeye Paving Corporation in the amount of $343,193.97. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number four is a resolution accepting work completed under the River Center Electrical Upgrades Project by Tri-City Electric Company in the amount of $325,138. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number five is a resolution approving the plan specification form of contract and estimated cost for the Lorton Avenue Overlay and Drainage Improvement Project. and estimated cost for the Lorton Avenue Overlay and Drainage Improvement Project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number six is a resolution approving the plan specification form of contract and estimated cost for the Water Pollution Control Plant Flood Mitigation Phase One Clearing and Grubbing Project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number seven is a resolution approving the specification form of contract and estimated cost for the CY twenty twenty-four sidewalk program. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number eight is a resolution approving the specification form of contract and estimated cost for the CY twenty twenty-four ADA Ramp Program. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number nine is a resolution introducing the proposed resolution of necessity covering the twenty twenty-four alley resurfacing program. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number ten is a resolution awarding a contract for the preliminary engineering services for the South Concord Railroad Grade Separation Project to H.R. Green in a mountain not to exceed eight hundred and five thousand dollars. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number eleven is a resolution authorizing the submission of a building resilient infrastructure and communities grant program application to the Federal Emergency Management Agency for financial assistance with the Water Pollution Control Plant Flood Mitigation Northern Levy System Project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number twelve is a motion awarding a contract for the compost facility lot repair project to Langman Construction in the amount of seventy-one thousand two hundred and sixty dollars and nine cents. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. And Alderman Kelly, would you set the agenda for us, please?
I'd be happy to. I'd like to make a motion that all twelve items be set on the consent agenda, please.
We have a motion and a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. The agenda is set and back to you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Dunn and Alderman Kelly. Next area is finance. Alderwoman Newton and Alderwoman Lynch will discuss. Alderwoman Newton, please.
Thank you, Mayor Mattson. So tonight, Alderwoman Lynch and I have one item to discuss on the finance agenda. One, resolution approving the purchase of inclusive playground equipment from Play Pro Recreation of Clive, Iowa, in an amount not to exceed two hundred and fifty thousand. That's CIP number ARP ten in First Ward. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Is there anyone from council wishing to address this item? Seeing none, just make a mention that purchases of ten to fifty thousand are included for informational purposes. There are six items there. I would now ask Alderwoman Lynch, will you please set the agenda?
I motion to place item number one on the consent agenda. All in favor? Oops, sorry.
We have a motion and second by Grip. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. This concludes the finance agenda. I yield the floor back to you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alderwoman Newton and Alderwoman Lynch. Next area is other ordinances, resolutions, motions. There are none for tonight. And then the next area, is there any public with business? If there is any public business, please step to the microphone, I mean, the podium, the microphones above you. You'll have five minutes. Remember our rules of decorum, please. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kerry Eklund and I live in this city. And it's been mentioned that some of the stories which I've been telling about city staff behavior are very hard to believe because it's hard to believe that anybody could be as vicious and cruel and mean-spirited as I'm saying that they have been the last three years. And I might mention that I heard on the radio the other day that January is National Stalking Awareness Month. And from my perspective, stalking is a form of terrorism and should be severely prosecuted. And I'll leave it there for a minute. And to show that I do know the difference between reality and not reality, I'm trying to make the city of Davenport famous as the site of the most bizarre white supremacist hate crime and abuse of city government authority in American history. That's true. I also have a work of art that I put up on my website for viewing and for sale. And if you Google the words-
Mr. G, we are not advertising selling here, so stop with that. I've told you that before, so please carry on to something new.
It's free to view. It's free to view. That's what, I'm not expecting anyone to buy anything.
Carry on.
I have a work of art, a work of art for viewing called Centennial Bridge and Flying Saucer. And if you Google the words Centennial Bridge and Flying Saucer, you'll find it. And I'm, my connection to reality is such that while I say the photograph is definitive proof of UFOs and flying saucers, I'm telling you right here, it may be an optical illusion. So I know the difference between reality and not reality. That's all my, that was my point with that. Trail of Tears. Trail of Tears. You'd think a hundred and ninety-four years would be enough, you would think. I'm going to thank a man who died in nineteen ninety-three for some words I'm going to play with. Root Boy Slim is what he went by. Died in nineteen ninety-three. He wrote some songs that I like. Package of crackers, bottle of wine, sleeping under cardboard, I guess I'm still alive. Searching the trash, collecting aluminum cans. Move along, you bum, screams the policeman. Numb and dejected, dazed and confused, I still go on living, though there's hardly any use. Hey, Mr. President, hey, Mr. Mayor, how about a crumb off your table for the homeless man? How about a crumb off your table for the homeless woman? Sleeping in the bus station, eating down at the mission. The country spent all its money on nuclear weapons, aircraft carriers everywhere, bombs, we got bombs, houses, ah, we're tearing them down. No houses for you, boy. Hey, Mr. Mayor, hey, Alderwoman, point of order. Let's share the wealth. I'm sleeping under cardboard and freezing to death. Hey, Governor Reynolds, hey, Senator Grassley, hey, Majority Leader Grassley, how about forty dollars a month for some of the nation's poorest and hungriest homeless children? What's that, Governor Reynolds, you say? You say the child labor laws? You say you changed the child labor laws so now all those fat, lazy second graders can get jobs at the Iowa meatpacking plants? You say you enjoy taking candy from the mouths of babes and their broccoli, too? How about a crumb off of your table for the hungry child? And in case anybody doesn't know what that last part about, Iowa is one of fifteen states that have said, we don't want to give forty dollars a month to the poorest children in the state of Iowa. So the federal government wants to, during the three months that schools are out next year, they want to give forty dollars a month to the poorest children to be spent on food. And the Iowa governor has said, we are not going to allow the federal government to give forty dollars a month to the poorest children in the state of Iowa. We don't want the federal money because if you give this money to these poor children, they might buy candy. And these poor children, she said, are overweight and there's no guarantee that they'll buy broccoli and carrots. They might buy candy. So these poor children in Iowa, the poorest children in the state of Iowa, the governor said, no, we don't want your money because these kids are too obese. And giving them food money will apparently just make them more obese. You can't trust them to buy carrots, they might buy candy. That's insane. But that's about as insane as tearing down houses in the city of Davenport.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Seeing no, okay, sir. Go ahead.
David Anderson, Award five. I would ask that all water leaks be legally addressed because it's that serious. I lost a mobile home due to it because I was young and stupid. My resume would be available on request. It would take over five minutes to tell it all. I'm requesting to live in the future housing at Annie Whitmire. I fit in with affordable housing, low-income senior housing, disabled housing. My experience in apartment maintenance, transportation, landscaping, elderly services, theater, computer installation and maintenance, normal logistics, technical writing, reporting, ADA compliance, has meant in government issues. And I tried to make it short and sweet. Thank you very much, Chair, if anybody wants to read it.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. My name is Rosa. My address, you don't need to know. I just want to tell y'all I appreciate everything-
Oh, you're from Davenport, ma'am? Thank you.
No, I'm from California, but here visiting the code. You know I'm from Davenport. I want to thank y'all for everything you're doing, Annie Whitmire, the consideration of keeping the junior theater. Appreciate all that, but don't ever, ever forget about three twenty-four North Main Street. I don't want y'all to take a breath on that, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Very good. Ms. Gleason, okay.
Diane Salmon, Eighth Ward. It's been two hundred and thirty-four days since the preventable building collapse happened and the innocent victims and their families have yet to receive any help or justice from a city that claims it's all about safety. I've lived here for the better part of fifty years and I have to say, this is one of the most disgraceful things I've ever seen in all those years, the very first one being the horrific collapse itself. How could you look at that building and not want to help them? How could you not hear the horrible noises coming from those machines and not want to help them? How could you bring other people into our city to help and not do a dang thing yourselves? I cannot understand how Daniel Brandon Colvin Senior, Ryan Hitchcock's life seemed to have meant nothing to you people, with the exception of a few. I say this because with the exception of a couple council members, Judith Lee and Derek being two of them and one still sitting, the rest of you have made no time or effort to personally contact the victims and see how you could help them. None of you were gathering supplies they needed or offering counseling services. None of you were doing a freaking thing to help them. I guess you should be thankful it wasn't your family because you sure as heck would have demanded help and justice right away then. I guess since they didn't own a historical building, they weren't trained to bring big business, open a doctor's office, or any of the other things that our city seems to deem is important, that those people were less important than anybody else. And that's very far from the truth. Their lives mattered then and they still matter today, and we won't stop fighting for them. I'm so sick and tired of hearing people claim the safety of this city is the most important thing when you fail to protect some of the most vulnerable residents of our city. Not only did you fail then, but you never even attempted to make it right in any way since then. Then we find out about the illegal payouts that happened before the election. And while many people were deceived because information was illegally withheld from them, there are many more of us who know the truth and we will keep sharing it to bring more awareness of the corruption that has occurred in our city. It may feel as if people have gotten by with shady dealings, but the truth always comes out and each and every person who failed will reap what they have sown because no one is above the law. Pride goes before a fall and there are people outside of this city and state whose eyes and ears have been opened and in due time, justice will be served for those who should have had it a long time ago. The fact that it has been two hundred and thirty-four days and people are still neglected yet trying to move forward with their lives should be a major red flag that the city is struggling. But then again, what if some of you cared about that anyway? Philippians two, three through eleven says, do nothing out of selfish ambition or vain conceit, but in humility, consider yourselves better, consider others better than yourselves. Each of you should not look only to your own interests, but also to the interests of others. Your attitude should be the same as that of Christ Jesus, who being in very nature God, did not consider equality with God something to be grasped, but made himself nothing, taking the very nature of a servant, being made in human likeness and being found in appearance as a man. He humbled himself and became obedient to death, even on a cross. Therefore God exalted him to the highest place and gave him the name that is above every name, that at the name of Jesus, every knee should bow in heaven, on earth and under the earth, and every tongue confess that Jesus Christ is Lord, to the glory of God the Father. There's a judgment day for all of us and I'm praying that all of you that had a hand in that building falling, no justice being served for these innocent people, that you will repent and you will make it right with God before it's too late because otherwise you will be sorry.
Thank you. Anyone else?
LeKhan Dixon, Seventh Ward. I don't know if you think it's getting any better, where it's been how many times since the building has fell, y'all have had a number of new people coming down here to complain about what y'all have done, decisions that you guys are making. And then you have tons of people coming down here and now they can hear exactly what's going on besides sending out a letter or having clear communication. That's something that the city lacks. Y'all guys try to hide things. You guys try to, I believe, well, it is hiding. Y'all hide things and then it comes out in a newspaper, it comes out on Facebook, it gets out any other way besides y'all guys stepping up and saying the truth the first time, from what happened to Mr. Kelly, from what happened to Mr. Cornet, from what happened with anything. Y'all guys should be sick of people running down here when y'all do something wrong. Let's get it right the first time and not have people come down here to complain about like this Annie Whitmire thing. I believe y'all jumped before y'all should have jumped and did some more organizing. I didn't get up and speak tonight and it was on the, it was on the agenda, so I know I can't speak about it now, but I believe that you guys should have done way more research before y'all had people pouring in here, pouring their heart out about something they dearly care about. And yes, we are still waiting for answers for three two four Main Street and the three lives lost. We are still waiting for answers about what happened to Tim Kelly. We are still waiting, well, about Mr. Cornet, before y'all guys realize that y'all guys are backhanding and backsliding nasty people. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Cheryl Shagina, Third Ward, fourteen oh one Clay Street. I almost made it through the whole thing without getting up and talking, but unfortunately, because of the lack of communication, the city seems to have a problem with, with the residents. I feel like I need to come up again and speak. Maybe it's a listening problem and, or not hearing or not comprehending problem that creates the communication problems. To hear the gentleman stand up here and say he was under the understanding that the entire complex was included leads me to understand there's a communication gap somewhere in the city. Maybe it's the size of the Grand Canyon. I hope not, but from this side, it seems like it is a huge gap. And I want to, we had some quotes about, from the Bible, and one of the things is the Old Testament and the walls of Jericho. So if you see me marching around this city when the sidewalks are clean and I can do that, that's because I will follow the Old Testament blueprint that's been given to us and that is marching around the walls of Jericho so the walls come tumbling down. I will pick up trumpets, I will pick up tambourines, I will do it to bring down the walls. And you guys really don't want me to do it, but I will. If that's what it takes to make better change, to make a better community, to make a better Davenport, it really shouldn't be that hard to communicate. And so we wouldn't have some of these issues, you wouldn't have so many people walking up here. I did find out that the city does have insurance bonding for some of the money, some of the insurance, some of the lawsuits. So it was good to find out that there is, but it's self-bonded, self-insured. But there is a million-dollar policy that the mayor is on the mayor. So that's one positive, I think, that the blanket that's taken care of, but we might also look at increasing that since the, that seems to be something you guys have control over. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Here, Cornet, Seventh Ward. I'd just like to bring to your attention with this cold weather and the snow, the way things have been going. The Seventh Ward is sort of an older ward, a lot of elderly people there. And with this big snowfall that we had, it's very hard for them to get out and clear their sidewalks in twenty-four hours. I know you say, hey, pay somebody to do it, but a lot of them are on limited incomes or fixed incomes. You know, eighty bucks is tough to come by for somebody to do your sidewalks. Secondly, they pay the seventy, eighty bucks to get their sidewalks cleared and their driveways cleared. And here come the snowplows that dump three and a half feet of ice. cleared. And here come the snowplows that dump three and a half feet of ice blocking your driveway now. They, they can't go out there and shovel that heavy. I mean, heck, they just dropped a half a ton on your, uh, driveway. They can't, uh, spend another fifty, sixty bucks to get that dug out. Um, I think the city should, uh, take a hard look at the time increment, uh, for some, uh, for these types of big snows because, uh, the elderly people just really have a hard time getting it done. Uh, and, uh, you know, we're not getting any younger here. So, uh, if y'all could take that into consideration before you go out and start handing out, uh, tickets for not having that done. Also, I'd like to, uh, wonder when we're going to, uh, get our Ferris wheel back. City owns it. We can't use it. Uh, you know, only person that makes money is, uh, Mr. Heller. Uh, I think it should be open, uh, to citizens of Davenport. Uh, during the time that we have the farmer's market going on, another attraction. I mean, the only time we can use it now is, uh, if there's a baseball game going on. So when we hand out these sweetheart contracts to Heller and that group, we need to, uh, think about the people at Davenport. We bought it, we own it, why aren't we using it? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Gleason, do you have something, sir? Please come up.
Uh, so, uh, Luis Vasquez, uh, third ward. Um, uh, I've also gone through tag back in the nineties and two thousands, uh, did, uh, Junior Theater. Uh, so now that, so now that we're, have the discussion of, uh, performance and public speaking and all that, uh, if we're putting attention and money in there, why not also add a, uh, classes or, um, videos online on how to, uh, do these meetings for the ward, the council, the committees and all that. You know, our own little version of Toastmasters, if you will, you know, cause that's, you know, that way the decorum, you know, you know, would be maintained, they have a standard and then, you know. And then that way, people, uh, who just want to rant can, you know, can get out of their system. And then when it's time to actually put in their two cents, they can do it concisely and maybe even with a bit of talent and, you know, polish. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Gleason? Is there a motion to adjourn? Motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Have a good weekend.